No? Are you serious? That's awesome. Shake your hand, buddy. So that kinda, that's special. See? Neighbor helping neighbor. I got a plaque here, Community Service Award, to present to the City of Pearland in grateful appreciation of your dedicated service to the people of this community during the tornado of 2023, presented by Mayor Jerry Mootum. And I want to present this to you, Mayor, but before, before we get off and lose track, I brought with me City Manager Jay Stokes, and I want him to say a few words because it puts it in a different perspective when staff is sharing, because I know me and you had talked, but in a lot of cases, a lot of the cities, it was staff talking to staff, and in some cases like LaPorte, no one talked to them, they just showed up. So Jay, say a few words.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I want you to know, Mayor, that our Public Works Director lives in Pearland, so we have an exchange here. That's, yeah. From staff perspective, I just want to say how much, again, we appreciate all of you. We want you to know that we don't wish a tornado on Pearland in any way or any other tragedy, but if it happens, we will be right there, we promise you. It speaks a lot to the value of relationships, it says a lot that... Hold it, Deer Park Way again. Says a lot, Deer Park Mayor and the Pearland Mayor know each other and have those kind of relationships. At staff level, I appreciate Trent very much and John back there and the relationships that we've had through the years with me and the Assistant City Manager. It was nice to be able to pick up the phone and call and know that we can get that help instantly, so thank you very much.
You have Deer Park. Thank you. I got it. Awesome, yeah.
I would love to...
All right, we will call to order the City Council regular meeting agenda for June the 12th, 2023 at 6:35 PM. If you would, join me in standing. We're going to be led by Councilmember Barry in our invocation, followed by Councilmember Carbone for the pledges of both of our flags. If you'll join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
I'm on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank you for that, and before we, well, roll call and certification of quorum, Madam Secretary, I'll certify that we have a quorum present, as all members are present with the exception of Member Patel. It's my understanding he's out of town, won't be present tonight. Before we move, I'd just like to take a quick point of personal privilege and state, we have a state championship girls softball team in town. Absolutely. As the girls went to Austin a week ago, came home with a gold medal. Our boys came up two runs shy on Saturday of doing the same. I think they would have been probably the second high school in the state of Texas to have had a double to do it. Barbers Hill, we were looking through some records, and Barbers Hill did it a couple of years ago in the class 4A, I think, range, and so more to come. We've told coaches, we're going to figure out how to celebrate. One thing we like to do is celebrate our youth and celebrate their achievements. This is a huge deal, and we're going to figure that out, and so stay tuned as to how we do that. But now that we've kind of got everybody home and they're not traveling to Austin and doing all those kinds of things, we can actually have some dialogue, so keep, keep your eyes peeled for that. And then the last thing I'm going to say is I'm going to recommend to our council, as well as our staff, go to a no-tie, no-tie June, July, and August. And I see everybody has followed, followed through. Members of staff, I mean, let's, it's, it's, it's 400 degrees outside, so let's get somewhat comfortable and settle in for the summer and all those good things. So with that, we'll move to citizens' comments. I understand we've got one general comment.
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Mayor Protim, if you'd present those.
Yes, sir. Jimmy Davis, if you'd come up to the podium, state your name and address, we'll give you three minutes to speak, and thank you for coming out.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsell Street, Pearland, 77584. Counsel, real quick on three items. New business number one, last time when it was up here and it was presented to y'all, I spoke to the applicants outside afterwards, spoke to the representative of the property owner, who's, who, if y'all remember correctly, when you asked about the commercial development being tied to a percentage of completion, the property owner, who doesn't speak for the developers, had absolutely no way they can't do that. I thought that was a little peculiar. In speaking outside to both representatives, from the property owner and developer, one said, oh, it's just going to be one company and it will be all rentals or all for sale, but the developer was telling me, well, you could have three or four companies. You could have people on, you know, one builder say, I'm going to build three buildings and I'm going to rent them, and across the street, the other builder could say, I'm going to sell them. So think about the future. I encourage y'all, when that comes up, if you're going to approve it, say it needs to be either all for sale or all rental, nothing in between, and think about the people that already live there, what's this going to do to their property values? Regarding new business number six, the center policy, I would strongly encourage you to go beyond the 45-day language that's in there. Look at something more like, give you a 90-day look-back window from discovery of whenever it happened. It may take you a couple months till you find out about it. You need 90 days from that point to say, hey, we're going to take this action. Mayor, counsel issue number two, larvicides. The monarch butterfly was adopted as a state insect on June 16th, 1995. Texas is an important stop in their migration from Mexico to Canada each spring. The numbers migrating have been declining, and there are many reasons. One of them is insecticides. The monarch butterfly is now an endangered species. They are pollinators, which are very important, and the numbers have been declining for years. The EPA has a monarch conservation program designed to work at the state level called the Federal Insecticide, Fungicide, and Rogenticide Act, or FIFRA, that may provide some guidance and helpful information. There are federal funds available to states to deal with this issue. If the federal tax money is there, why shouldn't we take advantage of it instead of letting other states have our tax dollars? I encourage the council to do the environmentally responsible action of declaring larvicides the preferred method for mosquito treatment, with the exception that if there are documented cases of adult mosquitoes with West Nile virus, that presents a public health danger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Good comments, as usual. Next one is on a particular item, okay, which item? With that, we will move forward. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Didn't get presented with any. Seeing none, Member Carbone, would you present consent agenda items A through I, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Conservation and possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through I, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Coza?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to new business item number one. Mr. Kamkar, could you present that, please?
Yes, sir. Consideration, possible action, second and final reading of ordinance 2000M-248, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Mayor, this is a zone change that's on its second reading from last time. The original came with a recommendation for approval from staff and was approved by a vote of four to three, therefore it's on our action items for tonight. So we can just move forward with any questions that the council has.
Okay. Got it. We'll turn to council for questions, comments, concerns. Member Kamkar?
Just really quick refresher, Trent, this is the item that was the homes that were connected, the attached homes?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Have we had any changes on any of that agreements? I know that there was a couple of things that were brought up at the time.
I'll see if Mr. Griggs or has anything to weigh in with.
Thank you, Trent. We did not receive anything additional from the applicant, so it is virtually the same as it was when y'all last discussed it.
I just want to say I agree with the public comment about the, it would, it would be nice to have these be for sale, but these things, you know, property owners allowed to do what they want to do. I truly strongly believe in homeownership, and I think it's very important, so I'll probably still maintain my position, but I appreciate the applicant coming and showing up here, and we'll have something we give to, I promise, so.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Member Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll just ask the same of the applicant, if there, I know there were some concerns, any follow-up to anything for the final vote, either Kevin or Jennifer, either of you? Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Stay consistent, no.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes port two.
All right. With that one, we will move to Mayor Protim Coza. Would you present item number two, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2023-111, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the request for additional funds from Forvis, who did our annual audit that we approved at the last meeting. This item was as well on that last meeting, and council had asked for some additional information regarding the, the work they were requesting the amendment for, and the staff requests for additional information supporting that work, as well as all the information they had submitted to us through that process. So we provided you that information last Thursday in a memo, wherein we also recommended an increase to $150,000. So at this point, we're ready to answer any questions and, and move forward.
All right, with that, we'll turn to council for questions, comments, concerns. Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor.
So staff recommends approving up to 150?
An increase of $20,970, so total contract value of up to 150.
Thank you for clarifying that. That was the question I had, was, has that been communicated to the audit firm?
Have we communicated that back to the audit firm?
Amy has been in contact with Amanda at Forvis, so yes, it has been communicated. They were to be in attendance, unfortunately due to unforeseen circumstances, our representative was not able to be here today.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm fine going up to 150. I don't see where they've provided us enough support to get up to the 217 they were requesting. That's it, Mayor, thank you. Member Kamkar?
Just wanted to make the motion, amend whenever we get through and get the number.
We'll get some questions and we'll come back.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was looking through the documentation, and it looks like, so we didn't, I guess midway through, they changed the rates, it looks like, is that correct? But that was not, that, it was only whenever we brought that forward that they communicated that the rates had changed, and I guess that was because they started in one year and then some people got promoted or got raises or something, and then their rates went up, but that wasn't communicated to us. Is that kind of clear as to what they're saying their underlying reasoning is, and that all, I mean, that was like the underlying or like the majority of the reason why the price went up so much?
So...
It wasn't a scope issue, correct?
Maybe I can start with that. So they, they had increased their rates during the middle of the contract after the engagement letter had gone out, and that was the 242,000 they had requested. And as, when we finally got all that backup documentation, that's when we started asking questions about, well, why, why did the rates all jump here? And they revised their ask by bringing their rates throughout the entire contract down to the original rates when we engaged with them this, this year, and that's what reduced it from 242 to 217.
And prior to that, the other firms we worked with, we hadn't exceeded about 90,000 roughly?
That's correct. And, you know, some of the documentation showed how in the past two years, they also had reduced what, you know, based on what they, you know, the number of hours and the rates, they had brought that down by using some kind of factor, and they just weren't using a, a factor bringing it down as far this year as they had in the past two years.
Because I think even based off of that, knowing that 90 has kind of traditionally been, you know, the highest that we've been charged by these other firms, that even 150 seems high to me, so I mean, I would, you know, I don't know how much leeway we have, but I mean, it just seems like...
We had a, we had an original contract with 120.
Right, and that...
So, I mean, we, we had already know that, you know, pricing was going to go up, but to your point, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I was leaning more towards like the 120, but again, I don't know Darren from a, you know, I mean, it's, we have an agreement with them, and it just seems like this is so outside of what is ordinary. If we did say 120 versus 150, I mean, what would our exposure be there?
Well, yes, I agree, we do have a contract. However, it's still incumbent upon them to provide us with accurate, detailed information to justify the cost they're charging, and I think that's the concern right now. That isn't there, and it doesn't swear up with what would be traditionally be charged in a case like this. And so absent that, you know, I, I would also defer to the members of the Audit Committee who are more familiar with what was done beyond possibly the original scope above the 120, and what would be justified going above that.
And I think that was the question I had to staff, was at some level, did they do additional work above and beyond the scope? And staff felt like there was some amount above and beyond, but certainly not double, you know, what their, what their ask was, and so this roughly $30,000 is, is what staff could justify the additional work that they actually did above and beyond the 120 that was in their contract.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess the way I'm looking at it is now our staff had to go back and do additional work to even figure that out, so I mean, it, you know, to me, I would be more inclined to just approve the 120, but I'll yield there, thank you.
Member Barry?
Yeah, Mayor, also too, I think Trent, you originally went back to them and told them, you know, made them adjust the, the actual pricing because you noticed the actual increase in rates, right? So, so they did reduce it.
That's correct. That, that was when it reduced from 242 to 217.
Right.
Their request.
And then they did do the, the Gatsby 87 stuff, right? That's additional work. So, I mean, at the end of the day, they did less hour work than they've done the previous two years for us, but yet somehow they decided not to give us as much of a credit, so I'm with Member Carbone on this deal. I'm good with approving the additional funding, but that's, that's the extent of it.
Yeah, something tells me when we go back out for bid and the proposals, that we're going to have more of a, probably an engineering-looking contract than we are a CPA contract.
I guess if I had one thing, being in audit 20-plus years ago, I mean, when you have staff turnover, that kills your audit budget, and there's nobody in here that's in it, what, I guess what's the longest finance staff we have on tenure right now that's in the meeting? Six months? Yeah, so I mean, there's, I hated that as a staff, because you're trying to learn what to do, and I'm trying to audit you. So I, I do think there was a lot of, I think they did burn through a lot of hours, I think they missed it, and I think this is the third year of a three-year contract, and they, they didn't, they discounted us heavily year one and year two, and this is their final parting shot, and I can get comfortable at the 150. I doubt that there are. They will be, it'll be interesting to see if Darren gets involved at some point, but yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm more than comfortable and, and think that that's, that's fair at the 150.
Questions, comments? Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Mayor, we had...
Mayor, we need to...
Oh, we did, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. Member Kamkar, you wanted to make a second motion to...
I'm going to go ahead and retract, I think Member Carbone is thinking that we should move forward, and I, if he had had more issue with it, I would, I would ask for us to pause, but I'm good.
All right, so do we need an actual amendment to state max of 120?
I believe is, I think it's 150, yeah. So I, right now, the max contract is 217 in the current resolution, and so I'd recommend a motion to amend that the max, total maximum amount of the contract not exceed 150.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to amend this resolution. Any other further questions on the amendment? Seeing none, Madam Secretary will vote on the motion to amend.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Coza?
Aye.
The motion to amend passes six to zero.
All right, so we now have an amended motion, seeing last opportunity for questions, comments. Seeing none, Madam Secretary will call for the vote on the amended motion.
Mayor Protim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
Aye.
The motion passes port two.
All right, with that, we will move to Mr. Hernandez, item number three, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R2023-144, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we approved the fiscal year budget this year, we have been unable to place most of our vehicle orders, just due, due to the general lack of available vehicles and then the manufacturers not or opening their order banks. We had recently learned that they could potentially open in July and August, but with no guarantees, and we'd be looking at 18-month deliveries, so our PD, as well as fleet staff, had been, you know, scouring for any available vehicles, came across 10 police package Tahos available on the lot at a dealership in Tomball. And so to secure those before anyone else did, we issued an emergency purchase order to get those locked down, and so this action comes back to actual ratify the expenditure. So those vehicles should be here after they go through their full outfitting in about four to five months, but we recommend the approval of the, our ratification of the purchase from Parkway Chevrolet in the amount of $660,237.40.
All right, sounds good. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Just glad we were able to find these, kind of fell in our lap, so we need them, so with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to item number four. Ms. Cade, would you present that, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2023-139, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. After disasters like Hurricane Harvey, there's often dollars available for mitigation-type programs, and there are the buyout programs as well as home elevation programs. So what this is, is we were awarded funds through the Texas Water Development Board for elevation of homes and to elevate those above the base flood elevation. We had dollars for five homes awarded in fiscal year '22 and an additional two homes in fiscal, fiscal year '23. So we've now gone through all the processes and have bid out the projects, so this is the actual contract for the company that will do the elevation. So it's the elevation of seven homes. We recommend the award a planet-three elevation in the amount of $1,431,775. Thank you, Mayor.
Sounds good. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. So back on, that's 200K per house, raise it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that, we've been...
And that, we've been, how many years has this been?
We've been working on this. Joel, details on how long we've been working towards this?
Not very long. Actually, the 2020 award just now came in to play in 2023 and the 2019 award came in in 2022, I believe. So, it took the state a while to get the projects approved and funded. But, you know, this is kind of based on, you know, the ability to do more than just elevate the property. So, we've got some funding that we could potentially use to skirt as well. But we're working through some things with the Department of Water Development Board to make sure we can spend the funds like that. So, we've just allocated as much as we can so we can go ahead and do that if necessary.
All right. Thank you for all the work and I can't imagine being a homeowner, kind of hanging in limbo for this long. I'm glad we, we finally got the funds.
It's a while. Any other questions, comments? Much needed. I know we actually should have seen this six months ago, but we had some problems with contractors, had to redo the process, which caused, caused some problems, so, and delay. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Is that an A?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Sounds good. Member Barry, would you take number five, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution number R2023-51, so moved.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. In 2015, the Macau Road Project was selected for funding through the Transportation Improvement Program at HGAC. And so, subsequent to that, we've gone into our advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation to move the project forward. So, basically, we're getting approximately 80% of the funding through that program with, with a 20% local match. And then we've been in design for several years now, working through the environmental approval process. And we're, we're getting close to having environmental approval completed. And then we'll move into, to the final design, land acquisition and utility relocation. What this item is, is to amend the existing design, engineering design contract with LAN. There's kind of three or four different things going on where we need to make this amendment. One is as part of the original design, there was an assumption that the bridge over Clear Creek would get built, rebuilt with the Clear Creek Drainage Project. And af- after several years have passed and working with flood control, that project right now is not planning on replacing that bridge. The existing bridges are in good shape and so there's no, no need to replace those. So, there, as well as at Hickory, the bridge at Hickory Slough, those existing bridges don't accommodate the bicycle and pedestrian requirements of those federal funds. So, this is to go back and add the pedestrian bridges to accommodate the bike and ped requirements of those funds at both of those locations. So, that's a part of the, the, the contract amendment. The other pieces are that we, we are going to also update the survey work because there's been a lot of changes out there since we did the original survey work so we can get prepared for the final design. And then we're looking, we're adding a retaining wall to the, to the design that'll help mitigate some of the damages in the land acquisition where it gets very narrow between the tracks and the existing right of way. And then we're also dealing with two pipeline crossings in the drainage infrastructure. So, we've got to go back based on the actual, you know, elevation difference between the drainage infrastructure, the pipelines. We've got to go back and, and do some additional engineering to protect those pipelines to meet those requirements. So, those are all the things included here. And so, we recommend approval to the increased LAN's contract by 488,390 dollars and 11 cents. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Questions, comments, concerns from council? Member Barry?
Yeah, Mayor, Trent, I'm kind of confused here. So, did Harris County Flood Control change the rules in the middle of the game or?
So, separate project. And so, they've, they're, they're, they're managing the Clear Creek Project, the federal project that was awarded funds after Hurricane Harvey. The initial efforts on that by flood control were based on the general reevaluation report that was completed in 2012 by the Corps of Engineers. And based on that, it would have replaced these bridges. So, at the time we started design on this project, that was the understanding. After flood control got into the details of that report, they realized that, you know, some things had changed and there were some assumptions on how much detention mitigation was already in place. So, that's modified their project. There's still, the, the project they're proposing will still have the same flood benefits, but its limits and what they need to do there at the bridge changed. So, there's no, not going to be a bridge replacement as part of the drainage project at this point. So, it was just what was known at the time and then what's been learned through them going through the process of developing the Clear Creek Project that made that change.
So, what's the point of, why do we have to now, you know, add a pedestrian bridge in, at Hickory Slough?
So, the, the assumption was if flood control was replacing the bridges, then when they got replaced, we would put the appropriate bicycle and pedestrian accommodations on the new bridges that were built by flood control. Now that flood control is not building those, we've got to provide that within our project. Just at the bridges. The rest of our project already had it.
I, I understand. I was just kind of wondering why all of a sudden it's become an issue if, if, if Harris County Flood Control has decided that they don't want to, they don't need to replace the bridges. So, why is it incumbent upon us to add functionality to that bridge when they've deemed it safe?
Bridge is safe. It's the federal transportation dollars that are building the road project that have the requirements for the bicycle and pedestrian accommodations.
I got you.
So, like we've done with Cullen, Bailey, McCard, we've got the 10-foot mixed-use path along those roadways. That's one of the ways to, to accommodate bicycle and pedestrian. And so, we, since we can't do it on the bridge, the existing bridges, we will have, we'll do it on separate bike and ped bridges.
Okay. All right. We certainly need the Macau expansion to.
Absolutely.
And that's a priority one project for sure. So, all right. Thank you for the info.
Any other question? Member Campcar?
Thank you, sir. Couple of quick questions off the memorandum. So, the, the scope isn't, we're obviously amending the contract and they're going to go and review site conditions and go and do this. Is there a possibility that in that design, that this design cost goes up or the engineering cost goes up? Because I know, you know, we were starting in one place and ending up in another. I mean, we have a, is there a big concern about that?
So, this amendment covers the design for, you know, what's being added to the scope? If there, it, like with any engineering design, if there's unknowns that are discovered that require additional engineering, there's a possibility of that, but this is what we know at this point. So, we expect this will get everything designed that we need.
Then with the amendment, I saw that we're not going to be able to use this as our AD 20. Is that appealable or is that just, we're stuck with that?
So, there's a couple of things we're working through there. It's just, I think, I would say right now, that's, we've exhausted our AD 20 on our design piece of it in our advanced funding agreement with TechDOT. However, we always have the option to go back and pursue additional dollars through HGAC as well as we were awarded $2 million of a community project funding through Congressman Nail's office as well. So, those dollars can be used in that direction as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
This is just Adrian learning things, but on this kind of similar vein of questioning on the, the pipelines. I, I was once told that railroads and, and pipelines have like deity status. Is that why they can get away with not being low enough in the ground and we kind of have to do something to accommodate that?
So, the, the real basics of it are you go back to the origin or the date of the easements that they occupy versus the, the right of way, the date the right of way was created. And oftentimes pipelines have been there for longer than the roadways. The other thing that plays into it is if you're expanding a roadway, so you're acquiring additional right of way, then they have prior rights over that. So, you know, the first thing you want to do is void, avoid having to relocate or lower a pipeline. Because in, in that situation, even if your right of way predates them, the new portion of your right of way, you're going to pay that proportionate share of the relocation. So, you usually try to avoid it. And in this case, I believe we've got clearance, but it's not enough clearance to just go across them. We've got to provide a protective slab or some type of protective measures and that, that's what has to be engineered here.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Learn something every day. Trent, while we've got several members of the public here, can you give a, just a brief timeline of what we think as, as it is today for the Macau project?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Have you got today?
As I mentioned, we're very close or near the end of the environmental approval process. We may have a few more months left on that. You have to gain environmental approval before you can actually go buy any additional right of way to make the road widening. So, you know, within the next handful of months, we expect to have environmental approval. It'll take us probably 12 to 18 months to acquire the right of way. And then once you have all the right of way, we have to relocate the utilities. So, relocating the, you know, electrical utilities as well as any gas, fiber optics, cable, those type of things. And that usually, once you have all the right of way, will take another 12 to 18 months. So, we're, we're in the ballpark of about three years before we get to construction.
Okay. Deal. Member Coza?
Trent, I know you and I have had conversations on the crossway right there between Macau and McCard. Just want to make sure that we do address that when Macau comes along because that will launch your drive at speed limit.
Yes, sir. And we're, we're actually looking at some potential mitigation of that situation earlier than that because some of it is, is not necessarily what's in the intersection, but on McCard itself, just as you start to head up, up or down the bridge on that side. So, I know our Public Works Group is taking a look at that and they're looking to see if there's anything we can do in, well in advance of this project.
Okay. Cause I know I had some folks reach out to me going west. I experienced the east part of it, but.
Yes, sir.
It was.
You didn't tell them to just slow down?
No. Doing the speed limit, doing the speed limit at 40 miles an hour, you'll launch your vehicle in there.
It's our attraction. It's our roller coaster. Need to charge a toll to go over. It's our attraction. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Good deal. Back to Member Carbone, would you present item number six, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R2023-142, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. It's not, Darren, do you have a staff report on this?
I will simply just indicate that after our last meeting on this issue, it was requested by two council members pursuant to council direction. I prepared the draft that's in tonight's agenda. In addition to that, there were some other comments that I included in the write-up on this agenda item that council members had noted. So, with that being said, I'll answer any questions, but I'll pass it back to the mayor and council. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. And at, as, at a request of Member Campcar, he asked to take the floor first. I'd like to refer to him.
Appreciate that, sir. Long, strange trip. I have a quick prepared statement. If I ramble, please forgive me, members of the council and the audience. You know, when we first undertook this, this process of selecting a new city manager, I committed the same level of time, energy and effort that I do for all types of city business. It's, it's no secret amongst my fellow council members, the staff of the public that I'm pretty relentless in my pursuit of information and the best decision for our city or the taxpayers. And my top priority has always been the safety of our residents, whether with enhanced drainage, crime prevention technology, or simply putting the right people into the right jobs. You know, I never allowed guardrails to slow me down professionally and, and I never let it slow me down as I push forward with my commitments to those whom I serve. In this instance, however, I forgot that I made other commitments too. And I failed to honor those commitments and the commitments that I made to my fellow council members, the city staff and our recruiting partners and the applicants for the city manager position. For not upholding to my commitment and to serve according to the decorum we've agreed to as a body, I wholeheartedly apologize. While I cannot commit to changing my attitude when it comes to fighting for the taxpayers and the safety of our parent and families, I can commit to stand by the council rules and the decorum that my position as a duly elected representative deserves. It's my pledge to the members, to the audience, to do better and to be more thoughtful about the potential consequences of my future actions. My top priorities remain the safety of parent and residents. And I realize that we as a body cannot pursue any priorities if the body is wary of the actions or intentions of any one member. To ensure that my message is clear, I'd like to reiterate, I extend a heartfelt apology to my fellow council members, the city staff, recruiting partners and the applicants for the position. I recognize that my actions fell short of the commitments I made to you and for that, I'm truly sorry. While I will continue to fiercely advocate for the taxpayers and the safety of parent and families, I now understand the importance of upholding the council rules and decorum. And I pledge to be more mindful of the potential consequences of my future actions and to work towards rebuilding trust and comity within our body. Without trust, we cannot effectively pursue our shared priorities for the betterment of our community. I thank you for understanding and for holding me and all members of this body accountable. Thank you. Alex Campcar.
Thank you for that, Member Campcar. And I know for, I'll speak for myself, I will accept that and we move on and we move from issue to issue, day to day. And so, I, I really greatly appreciate the comments that you've made here. I, I will turn it over to the two members who put this up. But what I'd like to just state, as we went through that issue, it became evident that we didn't have a formal process if and when we were to have an issue arise. Clearly, one did, which means somewhere off into the, hopefully, very far distant, distant future, we never have this, you know, have to even use this policy. But if we do, we would have something in place to go by. That was the hard part a month ago was how do we, how do we do anything? We were making it up and going and trying to be as professional and as, as business-oriented as we could. One of the things I've endeavored to do as your mayor in these proceedings and in representing our city is that we do things professionally, dignified, respectful, even though from time to time, people can see it, emotions do, do run. And, and it gets, it gets tough sometimes. These are tough decisions. We have, we all have our own way of doing things. And for the most part, 99.9% of the time, it's, we, we're, we're professional and we're on it and we can disagree on an issue and then the next issue, we're locked arm in arm and, and backed together and it, I take it personal. And one of, one of my hardest jobs is to making sure that we keep things about the issue, not about personal or personality. And again, that doesn't always easy to do. So, with that, I, again, Member Campcar, I greatly appreciate the words that you said and, and we will continue to move, you know, down the line. With that, this policy is not necessarily about a member. It's about the body. It's about the body having an opportunity to hold another member of the body accountable if and when we need to do so. And so, and having a right way to do that and doing it in a professional manner. With that, I'll I'll turn it to the two members who asked for this to be placed on the agenda, I believe, both Air Pro Tim Coza and Member Carbone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As far as my concerns are, first of all, I'd like to tell you thank you for apologizing tonight. It goes a long way. Better late than never, as far as that goes. It would have meant a lot to me had it been at last meeting instead of this one. But like I said, better late than never. So I do appreciate that. As far as that goes, about a year ago, we had a a discussion and several votes on our ethics policy of which we we gleaned from the discussions and the comments we had where a certain faction of the council wanted to go stricter. And as far as no contracts, period. We had a vote last meeting on the 22nd of May where one of our council members, Member Hernandez, is on the a role of Keep Pearland Beautiful. It is a contract with the city that we have. And in order for him to continue to work there, because we do fund Keep Pearland Beautiful, he had to recuse himself as we ended up voting on, he did. From there, we affirmed that vote. And then after the affirmation, we we voted and continue to keep that contract. So that right there was the policy we had put into place approximately a year ago. And had we gone with the most strict policy, at the time, we were at the state level, we strengthened our ethics policy from what the state regulates. And from there, Member Hernandez would have had a problem working at Keep Pearland Beautiful because it would have been no contract. And as far as that goes, I put a supplement so that you can see that process in the video from from how it worked through the process. And it worked, in my opinion, the way it should have. Knowing a lot of the people that were on the front end of Keep Pearland Beautiful and the intentions they had for Keep Pearland Beautiful and we shot it down, I think it would have been a disservice to them as well as the city. So I think a year ago, what we did was correct and we responsible for the city because we do have from time to time, business owners that would like to run and be a part of council and be able to make decisions. And they have contributed to Pearland for years. And they just happen to have a contract with the city. And I don't think we should penalize those folks. So from that regards, that's why I put that up there. One, to highlight what we did a year ago and then about a month, or excuse me, two weeks ago, when we affirmed the Keep Pearland Beautiful MOU that we did back then. From there, like I said, Member Kamkar, I do appreciate your apology this evening. I put up just strictly the, I think it was May 8th, when we had our meeting on the reprimand of of Member Kamkar. And it was a a deal that was loosely knit from our ethics policy back through Roberts Rules of Order that got us there. So that's why I feel not guided towards Member Kamkar, but just as a body to have something formally in case we do have a problem to where we can't address it. It's not something that it's aimed at Member Kamkar at all. It's aimed at any and each of us that are up here. And should something like that happen, you know, we address it appropriately and we take care of it and we move on. I don't want it to be an issue where it drags out, it makes things tougher for us. It's a place where if somebody does offer an apology that's heartfelt and then continues to to guide the path down that way that they do back up the the apology they gave, then there is forgiveness that we can give and we should give. So from from that perspective, in my opinion, at that time, that one date, it unfortunately happened that it was defiant, deflection. And it was, in my opinion, inappropriate. So from there, I brought this forward with Member Carbone in regards to having a formal central policy. And with that said, I would like to to have a vote that affirms this so that in the future, should we have any issue with any one of us or any future council members, that we have an avenue to be able to take care of it. And that's that's all where I'm at and and where my stance is. The one thing that that I do feel passionate about is that we should be able to get along, whether we agree or whether we disagree on something and take care of it from there and be able to agree to disagree if that's the case. And if we do, it will be a much better body to serve the citizens of Pearland and to do the business of the city. With that said, Mayor, thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate your comments, Jill. And we all have to have gut checks from time to time and assess where we are and what are we doing and how do we feel about ourselves? And I think for me, the reality is, is I was detracting from the business of what we have to do. We're in a very delicate situation right now with a lot of important things on our plate. And and I talked to Trent, actually, we had lunch today and I just told him, you know, straight away, I felt like I took away a misachievement to be the leader of our city at the staff level. And so I'm just very reflective now that, you know, my words have an impact, good or bad, on folks. And so for me, I I'm trying to reassess, how do I want to deploy those words? So I appreciate what you're trying to do with this. I think I think it puts a more developed procedure there. And I think the rules of the road are clear and I think rules of the road aren't necessarily a bad thing. I appreciate your thoughts and I want to work hard to keep pushing the right direction.
You're welcome and I appreciate that.
Member Carbone?
Yeah, no, thank you for for your words. As my wife tells me, she'll believe my words until my actions prove otherwise. So I look forward to a new new step and moving forward. I've served up here for a while and I've I've disagreed with a lot of people and it's the ability to to agree to disagree and move on, we can get good stuff done for the city. Up tonight, the draft policy, thank you for putting it together, Darren. I'm fine with with the draft as it sits. I guess we need to somehow work through the, I guess, proposed amendments or comments. Is that the resolution as it sits is what's in the body? And we'll need to make amendments to if if we discuss and want to change that? Or how do you see this going so we're not here all night?
That's a good question. No, you're you're correct in that the draft that I originally provided to council is the way it's presented tonight. And then I did receive some comments and feedback that councilmen, I think three individual council members had shared. Those are what's in at the end of the agenda write up. And so if the council would like to entertain any of those, there would need to be a proposed amendment tonight. Otherwise, it is in the form that I originally provided to council.
Okay, just to give my two cents, on amendments two through five, I'm not a fan of. The first one, I guess we need to to talk through that one. I can be persuaded one way or the other, but I'll I'll leave that to other comments.
Okay, why don't we get our general comments on the on the table and then we can tackle what we do here or nothing at all? So with that, any other questions, comments from council? Member Barry?
Mayor, thank you. Member Kamkar, I do appreciate your your comments and and I wish there I'd been faced with a situation like this previously in one of my previous elected positions. And that person chose not to not to actually acknowledge the fact that they made a mistake and just continue on to be belligerent and nonconforming or not wanting to work with the trustees. But I do applaud your comments. They go a long way with me because at at some point, we have to recognize the fact that, you know, there there were wrongs and and those wrongs could have had serious repercussions. And to this day, we really don't know had they, if they have had repercussions or not. But but at the end of the day, I do appreciate the comments. As far as the ethics ordinance goes, I like the ethics ordinance, the way the way it's been presented and and updated. As far as that goes, I'm good with everything there. So that's the end of my comments.
Jeff, just want to say real quick, I appreciate your comments. I know you've been doing this a long time. And what I will tell you is I'm I'm still evolving, I think, as an adult. I'm 38 years old, going to be hopefully 39 years soon. And I think you you look yourself in the the mirror and where do who do you want to be? And only you get to decide that. And the reality is, is I I probably didn't handle things the way I want to be. And I don't want to still be that person, so to speak, of intransigent. And and sometimes you need to just own up and say you messed up. And the reality is, is I I've we got a lot of people here that, you know, Mr. Patel was on the council. That was a cloud over him, that was a cloud over Trent. I've apologized to Trent, I need to sit down with Ruchi, but I think it's important to realize it's okay to hit the reverse and to say we made a mistake and don't hit the gas. And I've been hitting the gas real hard the last three years. And maybe the break is a little more what needs to happen and I'm open to that and I'm I'm trying to figure it out. But I appreciate your comments and and I apologize if I've disappointed you.
Questions, comments? Member Hernandez?
I do have, I don't know who put forward number one, but I, can we get some clarity on that? Because I'm just, the only, my concern with that is, and I want to be thoughtful of each one of these suggestions. When things are made retroactive, to me, that's always gives me a little bit of, you know, heartburn, setting a precedence like that. Can you give me some color on that? Sure, I'll I'll defer to the council member who ultimately made that recommendation. But I do know what the intent of that provision, and that is, in fact, what you stated, that the consequence provision of the proposed changes, not not the entirety of it all, but just the consequences. I think the individual was looking to have that applied to the most recent central item. And I think what you're referring to is normally in the process of drafting legislation, especially if there's actual penalties and things of that nature, typically it's perspective in nature. And I think that what you're referring to and not retroactive, I don't want to go get all legal on it, but I think what you're thinking of is ex post facto laws where you've something, something is determined to be illegal today that maybe wasn't illegal in the past. And ex post facto laws are applied to, there's a provision in the constitution that says you can't apply that to criminal actions. And what we're talking about here, this particular policy is not a criminal ordinance. And so technically, if the council wants to adopt such regulation and have a portion of it be retroactive, that is in the discretion of the council because it's not considered ex post facto in the truest sense of the term, contemplated under the constitution. So that's what it's about. But now, after that long ramble, I'll let the, if the council member wants to elaborate, I'll let him do that.
All right, yes, Adrian, to to help kind of explain.
Sure.
Where I come from, one, I had a lot of folks. I guess, one, they were upset that the leak happened first. Second, that it did end basically at the end of the day, our ability to look at anyone other than Trent, nothing against Trent, but it did end the process at that point. So we as a body did not have the ability to take A or B as far as that goes. And there were a lot of citizens that reached out to me saying, one, I'm I'm highly upset it happened. Two, we didn't get to go all the way through the process. Here again, nothing against Trent. It was just strictly that this action caused this to happen. So from that, that's kind of where my thoughts came from. Past that is, I think you and I are probably the only two that have 176 forms filed. The the next comments were, we didn't get, I don't know if you, there there's nothing in the public comments, there's nothing in the public record that goes with what happened so that in case somebody asks what, why, you know, just like when we do a 176, it's saying, hey, we have a contractor, we have business with the city. Here's what it is so that somebody can re research it, look at it and go, okay, that's what happened. So from that regards, that's why that happened. And then from there, a lot of people were like, it's just a slap on the wrist and did not feel that from that aspect, if you want to say a penalty or if you want to say a punishment, whatever the cause must, action must be for what happened. And a lot of folks asked me to make it retroactive. That's where the whole process from why and where I brought that.
Got it, okay, I appreciate that additional information. The other one was number five. Is there any way, I mean, how can we even dare in control if information is already in the public domain, it's marked confidential? I mean, I don't quite understand if it's already in the public domain, what what does it mean by allow not, how would we not allow its release if it's already in the public domain? So I guess, and to say something is in the public domain, that's that's a very generalized statement. Because there may be a topic in the public domain, but the details by which the city has provided information, you as council members receive information that the general public sometimes may ultimately be able to receive, but maybe not yet. Because whether it's a policy development or advisory information that may very well become public, isn't yet. And so it may be labeled as confidential. And so you may receive that and there may be people talking in the community about that very topic. But y'all have details that that they don't. And the release of that information could potentially be harmful to, it could be a relationship with another agency. It could be a relationship with a third party that we're contracting with. So there's all different ways that that information can be public, but not public yet, from the perspective of confidentiality here. The best way to answer that question is, when in doubt? And I encourage you to do this. I've said, if if you're in doubt about something as a council member, I would always recommend, reach out to me. Sure. And let's have that conversation because we can then work through those facts to see what's out there. What makes you think it's public information? And then what information would you like to potentially release? Because then we can work through it. What this is simply saying is confidential information that's confidential. It's labeled, it has to be identified as such. But if it is, then no one council member should have the authority on their own volition to release that information. In other words, it's the body that holds that confidentiality and that privilege and that y'all should then, as a body, make that determination unless it's already been released and is in the public and is okay to be released. So that's just a, that's a long answer again to to address the question. But I don't know that there's going to be a simple answer to your question. Got it, do do we even have recourse if someone were to receive by any means confidential information, not on the body, but just in the general public? But let's say it came through a member of this body. I mean, what do we, what is our recourse if that information is in, put out in the public? I'm just. If if something identified as confidential is in fact released to the public, the, you're you're looking at it right here. Now, I'm not saying there may not be other consequences depending on what's released, the impact from from another party or whatever. But I'm just saying, in in this context, this, again, I just want to make clear that the concept of a central policy, it's the only tool by which you individuals who are elected to hold each other accountable. All right, yeah, I don't, so I, yeah, I don't know that I'm in favor then of. I was confused, I'm like, if it's already out there, you know, how do we disallow it? But okay, I understand that. All right. If I could just use, without being too specific, there was an example, I think council was recently communicated with some information that was, it was identified as confidential. But I do know that the information was provided in the context of, hey, this is draft. There's going, it's going to be released, some information, that information was ultimately released to the public. At that point in time, if an individual council came and said, hey, we'd received this email, it's confidential. This has been released, here's a copy of that. And it's the same information, same topics, then I would, I would advise the council member that, yeah, that information is clearly out in the public. It's the same contextual information and the same facts. But there may be other facts that y'all may be privy to that are not meant to be released yet. Got it, okay. And then as far as the the other ones, I I like the high threshold. I think that if if it's something that we, it truly is egregious, we wouldn't have an issue meeting that threshold. And then I'll speak to the other two because I am the one that recommended those. I just think that it it's it's a good thing for us to allow some of that additional kind of fact gathering to some of the, I'm just, I was playing through a lot of scenarios in my head and thinking that potentially there could be something that could be put forward by the body against a a member that may not be as clear cut as what did happen. And in that case, you know, I just want to allow as much room as possible to the accused to really kind of, you know, act together. It may not, again, be something that is very clear. Sometimes allegations are thrown, you know, that are caused exactly by what Darren was just talking about. Sometimes stuff gets out in the public and people start saying, hey, this this happened, that happened, you know, they they hear things and and sometimes we do react to that. So that's what the the second recommendation was, to give the person who is accused the opportunity to provide that additional time to to fact gather and give us, you know, propose a, you know, a continuation, one automatic and then an extended one if the body decides to accept that. And then the other, the other, limiting the consequence to a year is because I think that we should provide a pathway forward, particularly on the the.
that we should provide a pathway forward, particularly on the, the piece about serving on committees, that if somebody truly is showing that they're making a good faith effort to, you know, atone for their sins, that we don't just say, hey, you can't participate. We're all elected up here, so I think that we should be given, you know, the opportunity to represent the people who elected us and taking that away indefinitely, I think is probably an overstep. So that, those are, that's the reason behind the recommendations that I made there. So I'll yield there, Mayor. Thank you.
Sounds good. All good comments, good questions. Any other questions, comments?
I just have a couple of points of information. As somebody, this is not a normal council item. Been three years, have never seen this, hope to never see this again. But that being said, Darren, you drafted this out of, can you talk about that process a little bit of just how we arrived to the draft? Because I kind of agree with Member Carbone, I think, I think the draft addresses what it needs to address to create structure, but I just, how did we get here?
Oh, good question. So as I started looking around, you know, there's well over 100 cities and, large cities, not large cities, but cities in the state of Texas. And so I started researching what cities were doing out there. A lot of cities don't, don't have a, a central policy. I mean, here we are, city's been here a long time and we haven't had one. So I started focusing on cities where they did. It seemed that there were a lot of them in the Dallas areas apparently, so they've had issues up there with it. And so there were numerous policies there. I did find some down in this area as well. But I started looking at what were some common threads, and most of them were very, very short ordinances, I mean, way shorter than this, probably less than half of what you were looking at here. And they were very broad and very general, no procedural elements whatsoever hardly. And so I started trying to figure out, okay, how can we try to hone it in a little bit more? I know there was some discussion, you run some risk when you try to get too specific, but then if you're getting too broad, you also create additional risks. So I tried to approach it from that angle and try to have, one, what are the grounds? What are the procedural elements? And then ultimately, what would be the consequences? And so that's, that's sort of how I got here to this point. I hope that answers your question if you.
It just helps understand that there was more review, I guess. Just real quick, on the item one that was pointed out, did any of the ordinances have any ex post facto elements to them on what you reviewed, whether they were in Dallas or here or wherever?
No, there weren't, no retroactive elements in the ones that I did review. What I mean, retroactive application of those provisions did not exist in the ones I did find, that I looked up.
This is a point of information, just because you're, do this more than I do by far. With all the different stuff in your career in our city, have any of the ordinances or resolutions you've done had an ex post facto or retroactive element to them?
No, but let me explain, the majority of what I draft, a lot of times there are penalty elements to it that are ordinances, whether it's a penalty that's a fine or whatever. And generally speaking, I'm prohibited from the constitution of having ex post facto in those ordinances. And so generally speaking, no, I would not have one that is what I call retroactive in nature because I would be prohibited in that instance.
Okay. All right. Just want to get the clarity on that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? I think, oh, Mayor Pro Tim, you got a comment?
Yes, Darren. So is along those lines right there in this instance, is there anything prohibiting us from having retroactivity in it?
No, and as indicated earlier, no, because this is not a criminal or penalty provision as you would find in a traditional ordinance. This is by resolution, this is the council's guiding principles and rules that you're going to use to hold each other accountable, and nothing would prevent it in that instance.
All right. Thank you.
But none of these that are, that we're talking about right now are even in the policy. So my question is, are we, and I kind of agree, if we look at anything, it would only be number one. Number two has some merit to it, Adrian. It's just what I want to make sure that we don't do, because if something like this were to occur, there's, there's something about ripping the Band-Aid off and getting it done and moving on and allowing things to heal versus continuing. But I think there's a, you know, is there a, is there a middle of the road there to, because you're right, if somebody is hit with an accusation, do you have a little bit of time to, you know, understand it and get your thoughts, you know, together on, on how to do it? But at the same time, because the longer it goes on, the more the body just gets hurt and destroyed and division and those types of things can set in. So I would, you know, if we did entertain something like that, I'd like to see maybe, you know, something in the, in the middle. I do like what you said about number three, under the consequences of central policy, the council member may be removed from committee assignments. And I do think as part of a, an apology, rebuilding trust, rebuilding the team, that it shouldn't necessarily be indefinitely, but having, you know, and again, I think the body can decide, okay, yep, member, you're ready to go back on a committee and we're good with that, rather than limiting it to completely. I do like the fact that, that something is up on a member's page, kind of there, conflict of interest, 176s and others stay up on your page all time. Having that on the page is not, is not a bad thing. Remember Cam Carr, I'll, I'll offer this as a, as a, I just thought about this as you were speaking. Instead of putting this retroactively in here, you allow the minutes to go up on your page, but I would turn around and put your statement that you just made tonight along with it so people can see that.
Can you run that back one more time for me?
Instead of adding the retroactivity into the policy, that you voluntarily put whatever's in here, the minutes, that you allow those minutes of the disclosure, you know, on your, on your, excuse me, members, minutes of that meeting on the disclosure page, but you'd also, I were you, I'd put the apology to the public and the members here up on there as well. That way it's out there, you've put it up there voluntarily, you've also put your apology up there as well, and we don't amend that in here.
I think that's a reasonable solution.
I think it's a, I think that's a good move on, on building that trust. I would let the other members decide on that, but I think that would be a good way to do it.
I'm committed to building committee back with the team and trying to figure a path where we can move forward and get things done. We're in a very vulnerable position where the city is, and if it, if it helps certain members as a body or individually feel, hey, we're working towards getting on the path that helps us work on these big issues with trust, I think, I think it's a reasonable solution. So.
And I'll let y'all speak to that, but I think that's a way forward.
Mayor Cole, if I could add one item to one of the other issues that was brought up, I know that Councilmember Hernandez had mentioned limiting the, I guess, the consequences to not more than a year, especially with the committees and things of that nature. Right now, if, if you look at the consequences, it says, the third one under D, the censured council members, it says, may be removed from committee assignments within the city or within governmental agencies. If, if the council wanted to address that, you could say, because since it's may be removed, you could put maybe removed for a period not to exceed. Just if, you know, not, not to exceed one year or something of that nature, if the council want to do it. That way, I mean, you could do it for three months, you could do it six months or whatever the council chose to do, if you wanted to make an amendment there.
Because I think it goes to the contrition of the member, right? And their work on restoring, restoring all that. And it puts it back in the council's. You know, just like we, you know, requiring three members to bring it forward as opposed to two, de-weaponizes it, it's not used as a weapon. Likewise, if that's not there, then moving forward with the work of the council should be, should be there. I, I'm good with that. I, I don't know about the other members, I think those are reasonable approaches.
I mean, the way I read it is, may be removed, so I mean, all these are council appointments anyway, so I'm, I'm fine leaving it written as is. It gives us, it gives council the discretion. And I, the way I read it is, next time you're up for a HGAC appointment or whatever appointment there is, it comes back before council for a vote anyway, whether that's two months, six months, 12 months. And in regards to, to number two, I mean, I think Robert's rules order allows you for, to table that. So I've got to think if, if y'all bring something against me and I get up here and I say, hey, I don't know where this is coming from, I want to be able to address it, can we table this or postpone it to the next meeting? I think any reasonable council would do that. So I think there's a mechanism in there. So, so across the board, I'm, I'm fine with, with it as, as drafted.
Okay. All right. We don't have any amendments on the table. Somebody going to make an amendment to add any or change any of these, or are we going to vote as is?
So Darren, as far as what Mayor and Member Cam Carr talked about voluntarily, is that something we need to have amendment for to voluntarily put it up there? Or is that just discussion, we'll take care of it?
No, I, I think that, of course, we're going to be voting on this, that was, I wouldn't recommend making that as part of the motion or anything, but I think.
I'll send an email at the end of the meeting and we'll work with Francis and we'll tag you on that, but I'll do it on my honor.
You're going to say, do it before we vote?
No, just asking for clarity. And as far as having that listed on a page, if a future event happened, do we need to make a motion for that?
It's in though.
It'll be part of the policy moving forward. Yeah, I think, I think Councilmember, Council, Cam Carr's gesture after visiting with the mayor was that even though it's not part, wasn't in effect at that time, he's going to go ahead and do that.
It just does away with the retroactivity. We have that on board, I believe him, and that's what we're going to do.
I'm fine with that.
So no amendment?
No amendment.
As is. If I may, just to the point that was made earlier about the committees, if that's the, if it's up ultimately to council's discretion, then why is it in the ordinance period? Not ordinance, but you know, why is it in this policy if it's ultimately council's discretion that anyone up here can serve on any committee? Why even?
I think it, I think what it does is, as a new council member comes in, you're reading through, going through various things, I know ethics policy and others are given to us, if you're reading through this, that's just part of, you just need to be aware, there's what some of the consequences are if something is presented. I think one of the things that we look at is, okay, so we have a, a time where we go through it and we vote, now, now what? What are the consequences? Well, there's consequences in here, it says it may, it also may not. It all depends on the actions of the member, right? And, and how that, we go through that.
Yeah, I guess the reason, the impetus behind setting that, that expiration date, I guess, is so that it would, would give that member at least the opportunity to bring it back up and say, hey, you know, hey, guys, I'm eligible again, you know? Again, it's kind of that atonement factor, just the indefiniteness of it, especially if you are a new member. I think it would help somebody to understand, like, you know, if you do these things and we find you have broken the promises up here, you know, you, you got to take a break for, you know, a year. I think that's more clarity than just like, eh, you know, it's kind of, we'll maybe bring it up, maybe not, I don't know.
I think, I think really, the, I think what Member Carbone mentioned regarding, you know, participation in certain, in certain committees and whatnot would actually come up annually, whereas if something were to occur midterm, then that member could actually be removed midterm from those positions. That's, that's the way I read it.
And then to number two also, I think it's, I think you're right, you know, that a reasonable body would allow that, that member to, you know, postpone something. But, you know, we're not always going to be potentially comprised of reasonable members. So, you know, I like the fact that it at least gives that automatic, hey, where's this coming from? You know, I exercise the option to, you know, take some time and bring this back before it gets put out. Because to the point we were discussing earlier, the moment it goes on an agenda, everyone's going to be talking about it. And it's going to, the process is going to be corrupted the moment it hits the public. So I, I just trying to, you know, it's innocent until proven guilty is a big thing to me and, you know, I just think that we should build that into this as much as we can. I know it's not a court proceeding, but, you know, to a degree, it's kind of the, the same thing, somebody's being accused of something and I want to give them the, the opportunity. Yeah, the court of public opinion is, is a tough court. So just give the, the person as much opportunity as they can to, to defend themselves. That's all, Mayor.
As somebody who's had to walk this path, would tell you, I think a cooling off period would have helped. But at the end of the day, process played out the way it did, and I think even if cooling off period was in place and the process played out the way it did, I think you would still be in a similar dynamic. Now, that being said, would, would cooler heads possibly prevail? Possibly, I don't know, we're, we're talking in hypothetical world. But I would say, if you want to put a cooling off period, I mean, offer it, I don't think it would be unreasonable to the point that I think Member Carbone may have made, or maybe the mayor said it, you want to roll through this and don't let it fester for, you know, a month and a half or two months either, you know what I mean? And I, I don't know.
That's a delicate amount.
Yeah. You know, if, if three members, just for the sake of the discussion, if three members go and put this on there into the new rules, knowing that you need to be at two thirds or whatever the number is, let's say high threshold, and at the same time, you would think people get in a room and discuss, hey, where are you going to do that? I don't know that 10 days is great either. I, I, I see both sides of it, but I mean, if cooling off period is offered, it may not be the worst thing. I mean, would, would a apology that after the 11th day help avoid more brain damage? And that's, you know, I've had to assess, probably the answer would be yes, most likely. But I, I mean, want to offer a cooling off period, I don't see the harm in it.
I think the, I think the procedures here built in more time than even what we had a month ago. So I think that starts the process. And I, I like Member Carbone's comment about, look, we want to take this all serious, the fact that we have it in here, it's a serious issue. And a member says, look, I, I haven't had a time to really address this, I really don't understand, I'm trying to get my arms around it. I think asking for that, you know, because that would automatically move it two weeks in most cases, you know, without, you know, providing a special meeting. So there, I think that builds it in and it, but at the same time, well, you're, this would not be automatic, this would be at the request. So it, it's the same thing, it's just without having it here, they would make that request to council without putting it in here. So I think it's there, the request is there, rather than making it automatic. And then that way, I think that may be the, the way we navigate the minefield, because as you said, you let it fester too long, it causes division, causes division in the, in the, in the citizenry, causes division amongst council potentially. So I, the more I've thought about it, the more I like the way it's written, because you do have that request to council, hey, can we postpone this for a couple of weeks so I can get my ducks in a row? And I would hope that we would all have, if, if you've got a high bar to put it on there, you should have a pretty, I would think a reasonable group that's trying to do this in the right way. And again, I think it just goes back to rules of decorum of who we are, we need to work together as a team, and when we have a, an issue, we address the issue, we don't address personalities, and let's address it and move on. Any other questions? Remember Cam Carr? We've just, we've just been, you know.
Give him enough time.
We didn't, I mean, I would hope it would be, oh, on the, the volunteer, I, that body, what do y'all think? He's voluntarily doing it.
How long does the 176 have to be up?
Entire term. I mean, I think entire term would be reasonable.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think it makes sense with 176. Darren, was there any other ones you looked at? Did they have any time, time limits on their disclosures?
Excuse me. I know there were no time limits, that's something that it's obviously at the discretion of council. I know that any disclosures under our ethics Excuse me. I know there were no time limits. That's something that it's obviously the discretion of council. I know that any disclosures under our ethics ordinance or 176 or 171 disclosures, those are both state law. Those do get posted on the website per the rules right now. And those will, those are on there, I guess, as long as the council member serving.
And as a reminder, that's our, we did that. That's not state law. That's what we decided, correct?
Well, no, it's state law. What I was referring to, 171 and 176 disclosures are state law. And then y'all.
As far as posting on our pages.
Yes, that was, I think back during the time of the council's priority was transparency with the public and said, let's make sure that goes on there.
That was added as part of.
And it's on the whole term.
Yes, that was part of what we agreed on.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we're gonna vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kozza?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. Moving on. And again, Member Cam Carr, appreciate your candor and your willingness to work on that tonight. Thank you. And before we move to the next item, Mayor Council, Trent, we have a couple of new employees in the House. Would you introduce a couple of our new folks over here? I see the chiefs abandoned the tides. There you go.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and glad to have the opportunity to introduce our new Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Lorenzo Wingate. He's right there. And then seated to his right is the new Director of Pearland Water Utility, Water and Wastewater Utilities. Pearland Water is Mr. David Sanz. So want to welcome him as well.
All right. Welcome aboard, gentlemen. Just, I know with the last meeting y'all were, I think it just come out of new employee hire experience. So I thought I'd let you get a couple of weeks under your belt, make, make sure you stayed. And introduce you. So I appreciate you guys being here. No, it's, it's all good. We welcome aboard and looking for great things. With that, we'll move to Mayor Council issues for council discussion. Item number one, discussion and direction to staff regarding PDC funds allocated for redevelopment. I'm going to turn that over to Member Barry and Member Kozza. They're the ones that I had requested this. So Member Barry, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little background on, on this particular item. We, this started months and months ago and through discussions with PDC and Matt's, Matt's office to kind of understand a little bit better on what we can do with some of the EDC funds that, that we have available to us and making it a priority to, to use those funds for older areas of Pearland and perform redevelopment tasks. And I think during the process, I think it might've taken two meetings for me to not, to quit saying maintenance and whatnot, but Darren quickly corrected me on that many times. But redevelopment of older areas, I think if you take a look at things like Haylick Road and things of that sort, you'll see that when we do go through and redevelop some of these, these older roads that may have culverts and ditches and, and convert those to curb and gutter type, type roadways with nice new concrete, it's more attractive for newer businesses to come to Pearland. And it makes it a much more appealing environment for them because we've already invested the money in redevelopment of those areas. So what we did was originally I asked for 20% annually of EDC funds to go towards, to go towards these types of projects. And I think we had had a verbal agreement with Matt and his team. And subsequently, they've even gone a step further and identified, I think, six projects that they could, they could actually work on in older areas of Pearland to start that, that type of redevelopment. And I think, I think we're kind of on that page, right? Isn't that the, isn't that about the right timeline?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I guess this is just to open the discussion up about how we utilize those funds and, and to put a policy in place so that as us members of council are here today, we may not be here in two, three, one year even. So we would like to codify this type of, this type of requirement for EDC to utilize that money for future redevelopment in older areas. And I wanted to kind of clarify a little bit too, is those areas, the redevelopment's not necessarily tied to a new project. It has to be a singular new redevelopment of a certain area. And, and so I think, I think we're on the right path. I think that's going to be a great, a great start to augmenting all the money that we've, we've built, we've used to develop newer areas of Pearland. And now we're going to turn our attention to some of the older areas of Pearland right now. So, and moving forward, this is going to guarantee that we continue to do that. So.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Basically along the same lines as Jeff discussed, the Rice Dry Road in, in Haylick, what was done there, we took a area of Pearland that if you want to say is kind of fallen behind, it had some metal buildings that were deteriorated, rusty and just kind of looked bad for the city. And if you drive down either one of those roads and take a look at it, it is a lot nicer. It brought in Caterpillar as an anchor back there up against the railroad as far as that goes. And there are other spots of Pearland in the older part that, that do need this. That could make the city look better, have better attraction for developers, for home development, anything along that line, just depending. I know looking at the Garden, O'Day, Max, any one of those streets, there's a lot of mixed use up and down there. And anything along those corridors, I know down 35, down Industrial, even kind of on Main Street itself, right there, just south of 518. We've got a nice development going in Old Town Site with the Sullivan's. There's some area that I think could benefit with some older buildings that would, if they were able to come down and have more development, wouldn't make the city nicer. The community that's being built right now there look better and just make the, if you want to call it old part of Pearland, the center part of Pearland, when it was a lot younger, look nicer. So from that regards, that's why I support it and why I seconded Jeff. I think it's a, a good expenditure of funds to be able to go into the older part of town and redevelopment and just bring the city back up to current standards.
Questions, comments from council? Member Cam Carr?
Want to understand a little bit of the intent on this, just I know important item. We talked, we had a meeting. I don't know if it was in the library or if it was in this, this one over here that we recently had. Are we aligning this in that direction with what the discussion was at that meeting in the library? I want to say it was in October, November of last year. This is essentially moving the ball on that item. Is that?
Yeah, this is the follow on to that meeting, just to take it a step further. In the last joint meeting we had, they identified the projects and kind of briefly went through those. And this is a follow on to that.
I'm generally supportive and I thought we had a credit to you, Member Barry. You, I don't think we'd had a joint meeting on this topic ever, or maybe in like many, many years. And I think.
Ever?
Yeah, we'll go with ever. And so I appreciate you giving us a chance. I thought it was a really good discussion and I agree with the gentleman here. As somebody who lives on the more, I would say, modern part of town, more recent, we have decent, very good infrastructure, depending on the issue. We have parts of the middle of the city and areas that for a while, just our eyes were other places. And I think this item will help us bring those eyes back to areas that, that we need to improve on.
That's the intention, right? The intention is to continue to focus on the older areas, but not forego the newer developments and things of that sort. So we want to continue to do that as well.
And, and at some point, the newer area will be old.
That's right.
Will need.
I mean, Shadow Creek Ranch is 20 years old now.
It's, it's not just, you know, right now.
Member Carbone?
I guess just to clarify, I think there, the I've heard a consensus from first time this was brought up. I know we had joint meetings. I guess what more direction does staff need? I would expect the next time we see the, the PDC budget, it's going to have that, it's going to be reflected. I guess I'm hesitant in terms of getting into restricted funds and budgetary and all of that. So what, I guess, what direction do we need to give staff now? But then also in the future, are we going to say, hey, we want you to target this, or we want your allocation to be this? And then do we need to put this back to a joint, joint meeting? I would say before we pass any resolution, let's sit down with EDC and us. Cause I don't want to, I don't want to sit up here and just make some, pass some resolution or give a direction without having their input. And I think we all are on the same page, both EDC and us, but I think out of courtesy to them, we should. But I guess staff, what, what do you need direction wise?
So I think, you know, based on the last joint meeting, we, both the EDC board had seen prior to that and with you at that, the, the five year plan, the infrastructure recapitalization that would meet and exceed this, this goal that's been, been put out there. So I think as we move forward with that, we can, you know, carry back the, you know, the direction and the input to the EDC board, ask them to, to review that, take action. And then if there's still a desire to put a resolution in place from the council's standpoint as, as guidelines, that we can do that. And I think our, our ask would be that, you know, we don't look at it in any specific given year, but that it'd be some sort of rolling average, because as you can see with the, the plan laid out, starting next year, because we don't have any projects designed and in the can, we're just going to be starting design work on, on a project. So that individual particular year would not meet that 20%. But the following year and some of the other years, we're going to be well above that into the 30 and 40% range. So I think when you're talking capital projects and smaller expenditures to do your design work and large expenditures for actually your, your construction that, that, that we have that looked at over some, some average number of years. You know, we always want to make sure it's tied to improving our values and economic development places that, that we're going to see that increased value like we have with the, the, the projects mentioned on Haylick and Rice Dry Road and some of the others. And then of course, every year we'll go through that budget process where the EDC goes through approving their budget and then the council then sees that budget subsequently. So that'll be the point where we can always weigh in and make sure we're hitting the right points on the right projects and that we're, we're hitting the, the, the goal or the, the guideline set forth. So Matt, is there any other thoughts you, things you need for your board or anything else to move forward?
Matt, what, what y'all's timeline for approving your budget at EDC?
We'll have it before the board this month, June.
So you're, so a couple of weeks from now?
Yeah.
You'll, okay. To answer your question, Tony, I, I think all of that is appropriate. And I, I do like the kind of the rolling 20% because any given year it might be a little bit low, might be a little bit high, just depends on the way the projects. I want to let the public know, really, I mean, we're throwing a lot of terms redevelopment and those types of things out there. I don't want to set the table for what we're talking about. We're talking about economic development dollars, which is a totally different bucket of funds that comes in through sales tax only. I would wager a guess that somewhere between 25 and 27% or so of the sales tax that's collected in our city is coming from people who don't live here. They're traveling in for various reasons, or they just live outside of our city and they're shopping here. So this is a bucket of money that is not part of your property tax. So we're talking about taking a portion of that, 20% on average on, 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 of the EDC funds, putting it back into infrastructure, water sewer drainage, redevelopment of roadways, in some cases rehab of, of, of old roadways and bringing our infrastructure up to speed in, in certain areas. And that's not hitting your property tax bill. So it's using the EDC dollars and making it go further for the rest of the citizens and all of our citizens in our community. And so how we develop a policy around this and all of that is the reason why we're discussing it. So I think it's very good. And it started by having a joint meeting. And again, thanks to the Members Kozza and Barry for bringing that forward then. And we sent the EDC off, said, you kind of know what our expectations are. Go look and see what projects could be put into the wheelhouse and bring that back to us. And that's what the last meeting was about, was unveiling that. And then here we are trying to develop the policy from a timeline standpoint. That kind of completes the timeline. I would say, Tony, if, if, if the EDC, I mean, if this thing is from a conceptual standpoint is a go, I, I would say they make that part of their budget process. We'll know that in a couple of weeks, three weeks. And then that sets the tone. We need to have more formal policy probably, you know, written up on how we do that. And I would say it's kind of trued up on an annual basis as we go through our budget process, either during the CIP discussion or we do it, you know, in leading up to budget, they've approved their budget. And it, that 20% rolling average kind of gets trued up during that process. And we know what the plan is. I think part of it is, these are so forward thinking, any given year, we don't know. But we do know what we've got planned for the next year, two years, three years, whatever they, they're, they're talking about. And back to the members of the public, I mean, you know, you're talking about, you know, ranging anywhere from three to five, you know, million dollars a year or even higher, you know, going back into infrastructure projects. Sometimes it's a loan project. Sometimes it could be, you know, several projects. And so this isn't insignificant, you know, monies. It's, it's significant dollars. And unfortunately, the great thing about it is we, we have projects across the city that when we go do bond projects and program, programs and things of that nature, a lot of these projects, hate to say, they just don't rise to the level to get into that bond program, but they're still needed. They're still greatly needed. They still impact an area of town. And so having this program will help us stretch those dollars a little bit further, stretch the impact of these projects a little bit further. So I think it's a, I think it's a win-win all the way around. It, it, from a value standpoint to a return on investment to attracting even new customers or new companies, small, medium and large, you know, it, it's out there and we have the ability to do that. So I do think we have a consensus to kind of move it forward. It's just the timing I wanted to kind of talk about. If that sounds good to you. Member Cam Carr?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to, I'm going to go around the world for half a second. Trent, you know how on the stormwater, not stormwater, the water plant, I ask my favorite question every 90 days? Who am I asking that question to now? Is that Lorenzo? The one about are we on budget, on time and?
Mr. Sanz.
Mr. Sanz. Okay. So I'll ask that. Well, I would just tell you, Mr. Sanz, we had a really, really great previous city engineer. And every 90 days on our largest infrastructure project, they ask the same three questions. I think we all know the, the questions and we'd get it done and it would be on an agenda. And, and I know with Member Barry bringing up, how do we keep an eye on it in the rolling average? The one thing I would, I would maybe ask, and maybe we don't need to vote officially to have it, but maybe once they have that budget lined out every 90 days, just on the quick agenda item, here's the one or two projects, here's the ones that it's fitting. So that way at least we see it once a quarter. And then over the course of the four quarters turns into a year, you can kind of see it ebb and flow. I think that maybe will be helpful from a reporting standpoint to help us just keep on track. Cause once we get into the budget flurry of, you know, June, July, August, you know, you, there's so much coming at you. But, you know, I think maybe that would be helpful. I don't know what you guys think, but I found it with the water plant was very effective.
Sure. That, that was, you know, $175 million project. And I think, I think on these same concept here is you need to know what's going on and need to know that on a regular basis. I would suggest we put that more in our regular, the way we report regularly on all of our capital projects to where we've got updates on the projects via memos. And, and of course you'll see the budget every year to make sure that, that we're hitting that 20% mark.
That would be the only one to your point. I think you're, you're right. A $3 million project doesn't need to necessarily suck up a whole agenda item, but in terms on like the local, are we meeting our budget on the EDC contribution? That was my, my point on that one.
Sure. And I think, you know, Matt, Matt does a lot of reporting out as well on his projects and what's going on there. So I think we can always attach that to, to those things as well.
That's kind of why I was saying, we kind of do it on an annual basis. As the budget comes through, we're looking at and seeing how are we doing it? What are we projecting forward? Yep. That meets the, the rolling average and we, we keep it going. Might be just, you know, again, that's the reporting, but all the, all these projects, ultimately it's our capital projects team that's. ultimately it's our capital projects team that's delivering them anyway. So we'll be getting those updates along the way.
Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my, my comment was, I, I think this is really great. So I wanted to say thanks for bringing this forward. I think I was not at that meeting as a matter of fact. So this, this is good that, you know, I feel like I need to give my input, my thumbprints on it. But the one thing for this in particular, I think it's really great that we're looking at redevelopment and trying to find ways to improve areas that may have fallen behind and attract, you know, new investment in the city. One of the things that I don't want to forget our existing businesses. So one thing just to keep in mind, if we could try to come up with some ideas to incentivize existing businesses to maybe redo their facade or try to come up to certain standards, whatever we can do to not forget that they exist as well, to bring them into the discussion, the fray. So we're bringing in, you know, obviously new development, new businesses to town. Let's try to get our, incentivize our existing businesses to maybe expand or improve as well, just as a little asterisk on this item, which I'm sure you're doing already, but just hopefully just trying to, you know, keep it in mind that that's.
I think a lot of these areas that we're talking about and these projects will be in areas of existing businesses. So it's giving that incentive in the, in the infrastructure to, we care about their bones as well. And I think as that happens, you'll see some of them go, wow, the city just spent X amount of dollars, maybe I can sprays my place up a little bit.
Matt, are there some parameters around some of those things that are important to consider? There is, you know, we can't, we can give direct incentives to primary employers and not non-primary employers. But I'll give you the one example, you know, Besser Plumbing on Hallock, you know, he pulled me outside and told me for 15 minutes how grateful he was that the city invested what we did on, on Hallock and how much better it made the whole street that he's located on and been in the community for many, many years. So I do think that our existing businesses that are on these streets that are outlined will be very appreciative of these investments.
Property values go up. Mayor, real quick, I wanted to go back to what, one thing member Carbone mentioned that I think you mentioned something about being restrictive and I don't necessarily like that term restrictive. I like it to, I, I want it to be more intentional, you know, than, you know, having, I look at a restricted fund as having a carve out of sorts, but, but yeah, I mean, I want it to become habit forming over the next centuries, you know, for Pearland, so.
What I would say is anytime you see a consultant stand at the podium saying how much, what our next 2020 plan or prosperity plan, there needs to be a section that carves out because that's what we hold staff back accountable for. So.
True.
As glossy as it gets, they need to have a section there talking about infrastructure and redevelopment. I, I think that's how you, that's how you continue it on without being too restrictive.
I think consultants may be the topic of another meeting, but.
Any other questions, comments? What's next? Darren, Trent, what would be the next steps?
I think the next steps is we'll work with the EDC and, and their board. They'll pass their budget if, if they think a resolution is appropriate there, then what we, I think to kind of put it back in front of the council, we would look at a, a resolution, laying out some, the general parameters of what we're, we're trying to accomplish here. And then that's kind of our guiding document moving forward as we develop these, these budgets in the future.
All right. Sounds good. We will move on to the next item. Item number two, resolution proclaiming larvicides as a preferred method of chemical-based vector control and committing to environmentally friendly, mindful chemical selection. With that, these two, this, this item was put forward by member Cade Hernandez. So I'll turn it over to you guys. And we do have a citizen to speak. Do we want to?
You want to let him?
Let's do the citizen speak first.
Thank you, Mayor. Dane Beto, if you would make your way to the podium, state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you for coming out this evening.
My name is Dane Beto. My address is 5710 Cottonwood Street here in Pearland. I'm here tonight about the mosquito spraying taking place in Bezoria County in Pearland. I am also one of the founding members of Bezoria County Beekeepers Association. Forgive me, I'm not used to doing this. I put together a statement here and I'd like to read it and I want to make it real clear, I'm in no way, shape or form attempting to bash any elected official, but I think it's very important that the city council understand the timeline that has taken place with Bezoria County Beekeepers Association over the last 10 years and county officials. So if I may, we started a Bezoria County Beekeepers Association about 12 years ago. There was eight of us. Like I said, my wife and I were two of the eight. The idea behind it was the awareness of, the education of, and the preservation of honeybees. My wife and I had the agenda of addressing the illegal pesticide applications taking place by the county. The county continued, still continues to spray off-label and to spray in violation of the pesticide product labels which fall under federal law. The reason for this taking place is the mass loss of honeybees taking place in Bezoria Within three weeks of starting the Bezoria County Beekeepers Association, the Bezoria County Mosquito Department was spraying at three o'clock in the afternoon and managed to wipe out an entire monarch butterfly migratory run to South America. The streets were literally littered in thousands of monarch butterflies. Due to the outrage of that, my wife and I decided to arrange a sit-down with Commissioner Stacy Adams, being he's our precinct commissioner. And while sitting down with him, he made it extremely clear that the spraying would not cease and that it had everything to do with budgeting. And I'll quote what he had to say. He said, "We are on a use it or lose it budget with Bezoria County Mosquito Department. Just short of kicking 55 gallon drums of pesticides off into a ditch or into the Gulf, we spray and we will continue to spray to beat the yearly budget." He also said if, he told my wife and I, "If you can prove that these pesticides are dangerous to men, women, children and domestic animals, I will see to it that the spraying cease." At that point, my wife slid a stack of pesticide labels highlighted that not only showed that it was toxic and dangerous, but it also that it was toxic to 33 birds, 29 insects that are protected and another 89 endangered species in the Clear Lake Bird Sanctuary, which is here in Pearland, which Pearland seems to be very proud of this bird sanctuary. I see it all over your website. Commissioner Stacy Adams slid the pile back to my wife and just shaking his head. So we knew we were getting nowhere as fast. Few months went by, several of us beekeepers and elected president and vice president decided to address the county commissioners court. Matt Sabestas stated that there'll be no discussion of honeybees or mosquito spraying. So we were kind of at a dead point there. Four years ago, Ryan Cade was up for reelection. So we had this idea that maybe if we contacted local TV news media, that maybe we could change Ryan Cade's mind. Since then, as things went on, any questions, any concerns, anything we want to voice, we are transferred, if we contact Ryan Cade's office, we are transferred to the district attorney's office. If we contact the mosquito department, we are transferred to the district attorney's office. They will not talk to us in any way, shape or form. Four years ago, when Ryan Cade was up for reelection, we got this bright idea that maybe we just contact the local TV news station.
Mr. Beto, real quick, are you wrapping your comments up pretty quick? You've gone through your three minutes about two minutes ago.
Oh, yeah, no, there's more. There's a lot of information. I've, I've left a packet with y'all.
Right.
And that packet's highlighted in some of the areas of concern. I'm just hoping that y'all will switch to a larvicide method. It's, it's more proactive than the, than the pesticides are.
All right. Thank you for that. And I'm sorry for cutting you off. I just wanted to make sure that we stayed on track and met our rules, but I appreciate you being here tonight and appreciate your comments.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'll, and I, I, I'd say, I, I know y'all had put a, a resolution, it's kind of non-binding. I was kind of hoping we could have just more of a holistic discussion. I know Commissioner Adams is here as well. I don't, is anybody from mosquito control here? I know we had, we had talked about having somebody here so we can get some data, questions, comments and allow staff to get back and forth with some questions to mosquito control and back here so we can make a, an informed decision. But, I mean, we, we didn't put it on the table for a vote. That's up to you guys, that's what you want to do. But I was kind of hoping we would just have a, have a discussion about it tonight, get some data and then come back and decide how we want to proceed. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you, Mayor. I did bring this with member Hernandez and I, first of all, want to address, we got several emails about it and that was due to an email sent by a county employee with, with misinformation in it, saying that we were trying not to spray anymore. And that isn't, that isn't the truth. We just think Pearland could do better, Bezoria County could do better. One of the things they spray is an organo, organo, I don't think, organophosphate. Organophosphates are not only insecticides, they're also nerve agents used as weapons. And that's one of the things they spray. And it, it, we could use larvicides. That way, like Mr. Beto said, it's proactive, that the mosquitoes then are not there to have to go out and kill with the poison. Now, that being said, if, if a mosquito is tested with Zika, West Nile, whatever, all those list of diseases, of course, that, that's a different story. This started in 2014. My, my thoughts about, my wondering about the pesticides in 2014, my daughter was in Pearland High School band when a plane flew over them in the middle of the day and sprayed them with, and by their own admission, a toxic pesticide. And so that started my interest in the pesticides used in Pearland. I also, also butterflies, pollinators, people and pets too. I mean, I live on a corner, we have a huge pool, we have a beautiful backyard and they spray, I get it twice. As soon as we hear it coming, we got to pack up and run in because we don't want it getting on us, you know? It killed a lot of my monarch butterfly caterpillars this year. It's, even if the beekeepers ask for no spray and you're spraying with a 15 mile an hour wind, it's not, you can't stop it from getting on the bees. I just, and on the website to address one other thing, if you look at other websites, other county websites, the labels and the list of what they're using for mosquito control is on there. We don't have anything like that. And I wonder, I wonder why. I'm not trying to say we shouldn't spray. I'm saying, I'm, I'm wanting to know why we can't use larvicides. We met with, you and I met with Ryan Cade almost three months ago and asked him that, asked him a lot of questions. And have we heard back? We haven't heard anything back from him in three months. So I don't know what the big secret is. I mean, why not larvicides instead of adulticides? It's better for people. It's better for the pollinators. Pearland and Bezoria County are bird sanctuaries. We're proud of that. Like you said, it's all over our website, yet we spray things that are poisonous to the birds and to the insects they eat. It just, it just doesn't make sense to me. I think we could do better.
Thank you, Mayor. So I seconded this maybe for more pragmatic reasons, talking to industry professionals at the Texas Beekeepers Association, Texas AgriLife, and then also with some private conservancies in the area, they, they spoke about the, the major difference, at least for them, the way that it was described to me is that the larvicides are, are denser in nature than what we're currently using. And so therefore you can have more of a targeted approach. And I guess for the people in our community who do want to maybe see some discretion in the way that the, the pesticide is being applied, particularly to people who may have bees or, or gardens, pollinator gardens, things like that, where, you know, they really can't prevent the, the creep of this current, you know, chemical going into their yard, that the larvicides may be kind of a, a compromise, I suppose, for them. So to echo what member Cade said, I think in no way, shape or form are, are either of us trying to say that we don't want the county to continue spraying for mosquitoes, doing everything that they can to keep our families safe. I mean, it, very clearly here, we say this is, you know, our preferred method of chemical-based vector control. And so vector being obviously the vehicle by which a disease is transmitted in a community. And so mosquitoes are a, you know, a very common vector, not just in our community, but all over the world. And when they go unchecked, they can multiply very, very quickly and can spread disease. But, you know, this is, as you said, Mayor, non-binding. This is simply an opportunity for us to say that this is something that we would prefer. We're not trying to force anything. Obviously, I don't even know that we, we have that authority really, nor do we want to, you know, take over. I think the, the county has been very, at least for me, anytime I've needed something, they've been very responsive. And so this is just asking them to join us and, and taking a look at the chemicals that are being used and hopefully being a little bit more mindful in that selection moving forward. One of the, the key elements that I mentioned when you and I spoke about this was that, you know, it, it says in here specifically when economically viable and readily available. You know, so I don't, I don't want to obviously put the county in a position to where, you know, if it's not something they can get their hands on and we can't spray, that we're just not going to spray. No, we, we want to make sure that we are addressing the mosquito issue. But it also has in there that we're just asking, and not just Bezoria County, we also mentioned Harris County and Fort Bend County as well, to ensure that they, along with us, are looking at this on a biennial basis to, to say, okay, in the future, maybe larvicides isn't the, the best, you know, option for us. There could be something that, that comes around that's better than what exists now and, and just committing to looking at those options on a regular basis moving forward. That's what we're asking. We're asking for collaboration here. I don't think that, you know, we're trying to slap anybody's hand or force anything or ask any, any, you know, body to stop spraying, but rather this is a, I think, a compromise and an opportunity to be mindful as we move forward. And so that's, that's really what I think the heart of this is. And so I will yield there. Thank you, Mayor.
I wanted to mention one more thing. And Harris County does use larvicide and only the toxic pesticides upon testing of a bad mosquito. So part of Pearland is already sprayed with larvicide, to be clear.
And I see the butterfly earrings. So appropriate for tonight. Yep. With that, I'll throw it open for questions from council. And again, I, I think getting some questions on the table, getting some answers back from the county. For example, I, I'd like to ask, so, you know, biannual, you know, meetings or discussions or, you know, looking at this, in your minds, what do you, how do you picture that?
I think it could, you know, I don't know what the county's resources are or what they commit to, you know, looking at the chemicals they're using currently. But I think we've got some really smart people on staff, but outside of our staff even, we've got some really great people in the community that I think would volunteer their expertise to assist with this. Like I said, I've already spoken with members of Texas Beekeepers as well as AgriLife Extension. We've got fantastic resources available to us here that I think could be part of the conversation to assist in that evaluation moving forward. But again, this is a very broad, loose commitment that if we say, look, every two years, we're going to take a look, I, I think we could work that out pretty easily with, with our partners.
Okay. Because I think the question that most people will have is, and again, I'm glad you addressed, you know, publicly, we're not talking about stopping spraying, stopping mosquito control in Pearland. That would, that would be crazy on the Gulf Coast to even think about doing that. But we are looking, you know, would it, can we have a different type of spray? And I think, I think the bigger questions that most people are going to have is the effectiveness one over the other, because, you know, they want to make sure that their, their kids and themselves and their animals are protected as well. And, you know, do they have the same effectiveness or better on larvae? Do they have the same effectiveness or, or better on the adult mosquito population? Do they have, you know, those types of things? I think anybody would say if it's a safer chemical for us, pets, anyone else, I think they would be inclined to do that. Obviously, another question that we would need to ask is, if any, cost differential, because that's something the county would have to weigh in. And again, it's non-binding, but having those, those, those communications. And so I think in a nutshell, those are kind of the, the questions that we would want to ask and answer. And if we can set up, you know, the right type of meeting with mosquito control and others to come and let's, let's have a, let's just peel back the curtain, if you will, and find out what all is going on. What is the schedule? How do they kind of address it and how would this affect that?
And I will say, if I could, just, that is part of the reason why, you know, it was built into. was built into here, you know, when economically viable and available, because it is, it is the county's budget, you know? So I mean, I don't know what that is, and I don't want to dictate to the county, just as I wouldn't want the county to dictate to us, you know, what to do. But rather, it's, it's, it's an ask.
It's an ask. Questions, comments? Remember Carbone?
Yeah. I balance this over, I mean, daily now, we're putting some cream or something on one of the girls that got tore up by mosquitoes. So I think that was the impetus behind a lot of the people that reached out and contacted me, and I think through the, through the website, y'all got. I mean, yeah, it's the effectiveness. I'd really like to know if it's, what's more effective. Bottom line is, I don't want my girl swelling up. No offense to save a butterfly or a milkweed. But if there's something out there that's just as effective or more effective, it's probably going to be more expensive, therefore not cost-effective. And so the county's not going to use it because they're in budget constraints. And so, I don't know, we wrestle with budget here. And now we're going to be using staff time to do biannual reviews. And then there's a public awareness campaign. I don't know. I think we can get a lot of these questions answered with the county. The Commissioner's here, he cares, he's good to work with. In terms of passing a resolution, as y'all say, it's a lot of words and not any teeth. It's if this, then that. And so, I don't know, we've been presented with this stuff before on gun rights and all kinds of things. And it's just a bunch of words on paper that, that we, it's not ripe for discussion, is what former Greg Hill, Councilman Greg Hill would say. And so, I don't know. I'd like to see if we can work it out and get something that's effective both on the mosquitoes and cost-effective. But, you know, where do we stop? And are we standing up a public health department inside the city? And, you know, let's bring that up during budget time. That's going to be a tough sell.
Remember Cam Carr?
I'm loathe to ask, but I, Member Carbone did point out, Commissioner Adams is here. Commissioner, can you talk about the budget just a little bit on this? Or do you want us to do this offline? Yeah, just, I, just in terms of what is the amount per mosquito for the year? Just for the record, the Commissioner's here has said 2.7. I mean, it's real money. And I think the concerns are valid. And just for the record, my wife and I have a butterfly garden. I've got three milkweed that are probably four feet tall, and I'm very proud of them. And, you know, I'm going to let you in my personal life for half a minute. When I wake up in the morning and my kids are all asleep and my wife's asleep, one of the best things is walking out, going and looking at that garden a little bit. And every now and then, I'll see a monarch. I'm going to stop, and I'm just going to look. And it's just that little monarch's doing his little thing. And it makes me happy, I'm just going to say that. And so when I hear the story about the thousand monarchs or whatever, that's absolutely depressing and gutting because they do make a long migration. I think it's like 2,000-plus miles or whatever, maybe. That being said, a member of Carbone makes a super point. I've got three children under the age of six. And seeing them, you know, especially after a rain, bit up is difficult. And I will empathize with the county. If you're in other parts of the county, you have to deal with the St. Bernard River. You gotta deal with the Gulf Coast. You're dealing with more impact. I don't have a river, as far as I know, in the city of Pearland. And so we don't have the same.
We have creeks.
Yeah, we have creeks. Yeah. And so I just, I empathize that we don't have the same bodies, but we do have some. I would say this, to Member Carbone's point, I kind of agree with him. We gotta be willing to put our money where our mouth is. And, but the one thing I'll say to that effect is, roughly speaking, the city of Pearland is roughly a third of all the tax value in this county. Roughly speaking, a third of that money that is collected comes from somebody up here, whether it's a business or a taxpayer homeowner. And if we want to propose something, I think we have to take the onus. I respect that they want to do a community-wide, county-wide spraying, and I think it's important. But I think we have to be willing to say, this is what we would like to be sprayed here. And we have to be real honest, are we going to put dollars behind it? I agree, staff time goes in there, then marketing and all this. That being said, I would like to see more monarchs in my neighborhood. So I just don't know. We talked about the budget being super competitive year-round on items, big and small. If we're told, is this a $600,000 problem, you know, every year or every two years, you've got to put a price tag to that. And so that would be my only thing, is I think working towards that, we need to get there. I read, I believe this gentleman put the materials, almost all of these ones are toxic to bees. And I like seeing those bees pollinating my garden. So, I mean, it's a balancing act, but I think we have to be real honest, there's a monetary piece to that. If we do a resolution, I'd like us to go beyond just the resolution and say we're going to do something about it. And say, county, will you hook up this chemical and when you come here? If we're not willing to buy the chemical or apply it or do all that, I think we have to be real honest about that. Those are just my high-level thoughts.
I wanted to just say, Member Carbone and Mr. Cam, uh, Member Cam Carr both mentioned their kids getting bit up or swollen up. Well, that larvicide keeps them from being adults and then having to use the adulticide. And if they're getting bit when they go outside, is the spray working? I'm just wondering. Thank you.
I don't know that there's a foolproof 100% spray that kills them all, or we would already have it. Right. And I, and again, I'm not trying to argue that. I'm just saying, we're going to have mosquitoes at some level with us. It's just, how do we control it? But I think the questions you guys raise bring up the greater fact. And I'm just going to ask, I don't know if Commissioner Adams, I know he doesn't, he's not the liaison to mosquito control. So I want to, you know, I don't know, you can't necessarily speak for mosquito control specifically. But I think, you know, we had a discussion Friday, and I think we need to give you guys some questions. Here's what we would like to see. And again, to your point, we don't know if it costs more or less. We don't know. I think the assumption would, would be that it, that it does, but we don't know that. Clearly, Harris County is using what we're talking about, so we might be able to get some data, you know, from them. So I think this discussion needs to be driven from facts and data, and we get that. And so, Commissioner Adams, can we submit to you guys? Because we have tried to reach out and get certain members of Commissioner's Court to respond to questions, to have no response. So if we could get some response, that's the reason why we're having this tonight. If we could get some of those responses and some questions asked and answered, then we can have that determination. And we may find something that does work better. I don't know. I don't want to assume it. And I think that's what we need to do, is go and, and I know you represent a large chunk of our community, used to be Commissioner Upier represented all of it, but we, your area has grown up here, and I think you pretty much take in the creek even, so, all the way along. So a lot of those floodplone areas, standing water and all of that's going to be in this area. And so I think that's probably the best thing we can do. And what I would say, I know you guys have submitted tons of questions. I think we just need to submit some questions to the county. Let's get some answers back. Hopefully, in two, three weeks, we can get some questions asked and answered. And then we can kind of come back and say, does it make sense for us to do anything different? Or here's the data, that might be difficult to do. I don't know. I don't even want to guess at where that data's going to go until we get it. That may be the way to do this. And instead of just passing something to pass it, we could come back with some data and say, now, let's sit down with the county. How do we advance this if it makes sense for us?
So Mayor, I heard several questions tonight, but if we can have all submitted within the week or so, then we can compile those, you know, and get them all submitted over to the county.
Make a, send a note out tomorrow, say, close of business Friday, questions in. And that way, it's there, it's a reminder. And we can get that in and really get, I'm probably going to learn more about chemicals than I did in chemistry. So here we go. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's appropriate. I did want to, since Commissioner Adams is here, to say thank you for being here tonight, Commissioner. Really greatly appreciate it. And I guess even being willing to take these questions back and help us get answers and try to find a solution moving forward. Not saying that what solution we have now may the best, but let's, let's at least start down that path. And we, at least I, try not to speak for the body. Greatly appreciate you being here, but I think everyone does. So thank you for your time tonight.
Absolutely. Any follow-up? Hearing none, we'll close this. We'll move forward in our agenda, executive session, under Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, deliberations regarding the sale, purchase, lease, or exchange of real property. Council will move into executive session at 8:49. Executive Session at 9:16. Moving to new business. New Business Item Number 7. We will take no action. With that, we will adjourn at 9:16.